Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to tonight's City of Wildwood's Planning and Zoning Commission for September 16th, 2019. This meeting is livestreamed, and I want to remind everybody to turn your cellphones to silent. Tonight's agenda includes one public hearing item, but that has been postponed in the previous meeting, so it will continue to be postponed, as I understand. One letter of recommendation, one information report, and one correspondence items. So Travis, could I have a roll call of commission members?
Commissioner Helfry?
Here.
Commissioner Levitt?
Here.
Commissioner Cohn?
Here.
Commissioner Gragnani?
Here.
Commissioner Beatty?
Here.
Commissioner Depler?
Here.
Commissioner Simpson?
Here.
Chair Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Werther?
Present.
Mayor Bowlin?
Here.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the September 3rd planning and zoning meeting minutes? Councilman Werther and Commissioner Helfry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Commissioner Simpson?
Thank you all.
Yeah, does the department have any opening remarks?
Please have a good evening.
Okay, so what action do we need to do with the public hearing? Speaker cards for a public comment session.
Mr. Hudson?
I'm David Hudson, 1-806-8-
Bevler Woods Road.
63005. I have an update on the PZ 15-17 recent waterfall operation. Hello, hello?
Yes, 1517 recent waterfall operation. The waterfall began running for about 10 to 13 hours a day at the end of June with associated musty odors when it was running. My wife returned on August 13th from being out of town for three weeks and was exposed while on our property to the waterfall in operation, and she again experienced sore throat and lung discomfort and visited her pulmonologist. I then noticed from our property line, this is after it was running for about six weeks at that rate, there appeared to be biofilms of black mold, algae, and bacterial growths on the waterfall rock. Here's a photo of the, that I took, and then a crop section of that same photo showing closer images of the, of the green, red, and black covering the rock. I did not notice these growths prior to the recent extended period of operation of the waterfall. During the day, though those pic, that picture was taken on August 15th, during the day on August 19th, a Wildwood police officer visited and noted the waterfall odor and noise. My understanding is that ARDL was prepared to perform the water testing in the first 10 days of August. When the testing was not completed at that, in that timeframe, I was told that ARDL would not be allowed access to the property until after Labor Day. In order to not interfere with the water testing, I chose to not present these images to the commission at the previous meeting, but did inform Mr. Vunich. To my knowledge, ARDL has still not been allowed on the property. At this point, the growths on the waterfall are a clear indication that it is a misguided assumption that extended running of the waterfall purifies the source lake water. These growths suggest that immediate testing is imperative, and no further operation be allowed before a treatment protocol is approved and in place. No treatment should be performed during this delay before testing is completed. I am available if there are any questions. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Next speaker?
Hello, I am Caitlin Horn. I am with the St. Louis Sudbury School for Item 8, New Business, PC 16289. I just want to state that I am here, I am the Board Secretary, along with several members of our Board, and our Board President Alexis Franklin, and Doug Gilbert, the owner of the property, is here as well for comment if you should need them. And we have a few brochures about our school if anyone would like to look at them.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Travis?
No more speaker cards.
Okay. Mr. Vunich?
Mr. Chairman, could we get, could we get those brochures?
Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the department will keep one of them so we could make a copy of it, and then we'll send it to you digitally via email so each of you can have your own brochure. Mr. Chair, with your permission, I would ask the commission allow Mr. Newberry to read the public hearing notice for Mr. Pilgrim into the record, and then I will ask for a motion to postpone.
PZ 12-19 Zachary Pilgrim, 4733 Fox Creek Road, Wildwood, Missouri 63069. Care of Power Home Solar, 209 Hughes Lane, St. Charles, Missouri 63301. A request for a conditional use permit in the NU Non-Urban Residence District and FPNU Floodplain Non-Urban Residence District. Street address 4733 Fox Creek Road, locator number 28Y220053, for the installation of ground-mounted solar panels upon this three-acre parcel of land which is located on the east side of Fox Creek Road, north of Foxview Lane. This request is to be reviewed in accordance with Chapter 415.090, NU Non-Urban Residence District Regulations of the City of Wildwood Zoning Ordinance, which establishes standards and requirements for the installation of solar panels. The requested permit is required due to the proposed panels, solar panels being of a ground-mounted design type, Ward 6.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Mr. Chair, thank you again for allowing Mr. Newberry to read the advertisement into the record. As was mentioned approximately two weeks ago, the petition in this case suffered flooding from the recent heavy rains and storms that plagued the area through August and parts of early September. The location of the solar panels was to be in an area that is not floodplain, but due to the storms and the recent events, it is now floodplain, and it was flooded with three feet of water prior to the scheduled public hearing, again, two weeks ago. The department asked for a postponement approximately two weeks ago due to the fact that the location of the solar panels, the ground-mounted types, is being considered for change. The department has yet to receive information relating to that change, so tonight it is again respectfully requesting the Planning and Zoning Commission postpone this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Gragnani, second by Commissioner Cohn. All those in favor for postponement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's postponed. Mr. Newberry, will you read PZ 13-19?
PZ 13-19, City of Wildwood, Missouri 16860, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri 63040, care of Department of Planning. A request for the preparation of a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission upon an item relating to an extension of a moratorium that is associated with PZ 1 and 1A-99, WJ Burn Builders, Inc., 3112 Shady Glen Estates Drive, Wildwood, Missouri 63038, which incorporates an approved planned residential development overlay district that authorizes a 23-lot residential subdivision located on an 18.33 acre tract of land, being situated on the north side of Strecker Road, east of Inglebrook Drive. Locator numbers 22U 240024, 22U 330031, and 22U 330062. Street addresses 177 Strecker Road, 165 Strecker Road, and 173 Strecker Road. Given the current stay on the issuance of permits for the development of the site, in accordance with the approved site development plan, has been in place for over 11 years, but still requires certain determinations and actions relative to the subject tract of land, Ward 2.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry. Mr. Vunich?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight the draft version of the letter of recommendation that now reflects the Planning and Zoning Commission's action regarding the recommendation to extend the moratorium for the Strecker Forest Site. As you all are aware from the discussion that occurred approximately two weeks ago, the Strecker Forest Site has an environmental coveted area that was recently established by the Environmental Protection Agency upon it. It also abuts Russell Bliss's property, a property that remains on the National Priorities List. Over the course of the last 11 years, a number of efforts have been made by different agencies of the federal and state governments, as well as the city, to determine the safety from a public health standpoint for residential use of the Strecker Forest Site. Questions remain, data is missing, and commitments from the federal and state governments have yet to be completed. Therefore, the moratorium is necessary to ensure that when a decision is made, it is made with the fullest amount of information that has been requested by the city and those residents that are most impacted by its potential development. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously supported the extension of the moratorium for an indefinite period, and the letter is in the appropriate form to be forwarded to City Council with that recommendation. Mr. Chair, the department respectfully requests a motion and second to approve the draft letter of recommendation to allow it to be forwarded to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. Any discussion?
Motion to approve the letter of recommendation.
Okay. Second? Okay. We have a motion and a second, but I found a typo in here when I was going through it, so I wanted to check.
I'm surprised there's only one.
On page, page two, it should say "extend" and not "extended." First sentence.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll make that alteration, and I'm sure the maker and the second of the motion are acceptable to the chain.
All right. Roll call vote?
Commissioner Helfry?
Yes.
Commissioner Levitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Cohn?
Yes.
Commissioner Gragnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty?
Yes.
Commissioner Depler?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Chair Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Werther?
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Moving on, we have an information report. Mr. Newberry, reading PZ 14-19.
PZ 14-19, City of Wildwood, Missouri 16860, Main Street, Wildwood, Missouri 63040, care of Department of Planning. A request to develop new legislation relating to small cell technology in association with new telecommunications services pertaining to the placement, installation, and construction of communication and support structures, wireless facilities, and accessory equipment. Administrative procedures related to the consideration thereof by the city and the promotion of the health, safety, and welfare of Wildwood residents, all consistent with current federal and state laws and regulation, all Ward.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry and Mr. Vunich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, before the department begins presenting its information report with associated recommendations, I'd like to do a couple of opening comments. First, the question may be asked, do we have to do these changes? And in a similar instance to the model telecommunications ordinance which was recently changed, and medical marijuana, yes. Again, either through the federal, state, or both levels of government, mandates have been prescribed to local jurisdictions that eliminate or severely hamper their ability to control local land use and implement or apply their development regulations. So, just so you're all aware, it isn't that the department is advocating this with a zest for its land use, but is doing so because, again, consistently with consistency with state statute is required. Secondly, Mr. Young, our city attorney, is much an expert on this as anyone I know in the state of Missouri, so if there are technical questions relating to the proposed ordinance language, I will defer those to him. Mr. Chair and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, recently the state legislature passed additional law regarding small wireless facilities and their implementation in public right-of-way areas. As you know, the City of Wildwood is the third-largest geographic area for a city in the state of Missouri, which equates to a number of miles of public right-of-ways. So the impact of this particular change could be far-reaching and affect all types of zoning district areas and designations, meaning this could occur in residential settings, commercial settings, institutional settings, and finally, industrial settings. The only protection, so to speak, that's been provided that is similar or retains the same level of authority is that if a proposal does involve a residential area in a historic district, the city retains full control of its zoning process there. Otherwise, the public right-of-ways are open to use for certain service providers who install small vertical poles with equipment to facilitate the robust availability of data and internet services in the city of Wildwood. The proposed ordinance was developed by the Missouri Municipal League and provided to the Department of Planning by Mr. Young, our city attorney. In it, it has many sections related to it, but principally it establishes the rationales for the new law, also the process associated with it, the standards for review, the permitting process, denials associated with it, fees, and other legal requirements. The ordinance is not complete in its proposed form. There are fees that have yet to be determined. That is something Mr. Young and the Department of Planning will complete before the letter of recommendation in draft form is presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And there are a couple of areas that the department is hoping that there is greater latitude than provided in the current language relative to placement of poles in certain locations within the city of Wildwood. All in all, though, the proposed ordinance, as referenced in the department's report, does follow the Missouri Municipal League's recommended style and content, which is consistent with the state law that established what is called the Uniform Small Wireless Facility Deployment Act. Quite a mouthful. But as is noted in the analysis, this is something that require, is required of the city to proceed forward with. Mr. Young, Mr. Newberry, and I have been, have received questions concerning small wireless facilities and their deployment in city right-of-way areas, and so there is a desire for some providers to proceed forward, which makes the discussion and action on this particular matter important. Tonight, the department has prepared for the Planning and Zoning Commission a draft ordinance reflective of the state law, and has identified key components of it, and is recommending approval of it with those caveats that were spoken relating to fees and a couple of other areas associated with it. Therefore, tonight, the department is seeking a motion to approve the information report with recommendation, and is available to answer any questions or respond to comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vunich. All of them up for discussion or entertaining motion? Commissioner Helfry?
So I have just, I mean, it sounds like we, our kind of, our hands are tied on this, but I just have a couple of questions. These poles, these little poles, are, how exactly does that affect a residential area, a neighborhood? What can they do? And then, the other question I had was, once someone wants to come in and put one of these towers, do they not have to come in front of the zoning at all? I mean, what's the process for that? Now, handoff.
The providers are not required to receive any kind of approval or action from the Planning and Zoning Commission unless, again, in a residential setting that's part of a historic district, or under some certain circumstances relating to the height of the tower, as I recall. I could be off on that. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission will, for all intents and purposes, not be asked to review any of these installations. That is, an administrative act that will be reviewed and acted upon by the Departments of Planning and Public Works. So from that perspective, as I say, the city's hands are somewhat tied in making good decisions. In terms of the height, generally speaking, the poles will be 40 feet in height or less. The ordinance as proposed speaks to that no pole can be greater than 10 feet in height than any other pole in its vicinity, meaning that there is a cap on the maximum height. So if a pole were to be 40 feet, I believe it could be considered at 50 feet. I'm looking to city attorney Young to assist me because I am not the expert on this, and hopefully will be eventually, but not at this stage. So, in a worst-case scenario, I would guess, I wouldn't guess, I would estimate that the height of the poles will be no greater than 40 to 50 feet.
How often do they, do they need these poles? I mean, can they just walk into a neighborhood and just put pole after pole after pole?
Well, Mayor Werther may be able to address that circumstance better than I, but my understanding is, is they're intended to carry a lot of data, and data is a user of bandwidth, so the poles would generally have to be closer together than farther apart.
Mr. Vunich's assessment's pretty much correct. The only thing I'll add to that is that, keep in mind, we'll have carriers, multiple carriers seeking poles for their own radios and gear in that regard. So, it's going to be a very different look to landscape going forward.
So, I, the reason I am asking about this is because we had someone come to me, I guess, last year about this coming down the pike, and she was very concerned about it. So, I guess if there's something we can do. Thank you, Joe.
Well, one of the areas, Commissioner Helfry, that I kind of mentioned in my short presentation on this subject, is that there are a couple of, couple of components of the proposed ordinance I'd like to talk with Mr. Young about. One is, both our zoning ordinance in some respects, but certainly our subdivision and development regulations require all new utilities to be underground. So a vertical pole in a subdivision or location where all the other utilities have been underground, and we just have pedestal or ground-mounted transformer boxes, is certainly going to stand out even greater. And so, I haven't been able to reconcile what the state is trying to do with that particular component, undergrounding versus vertical. And it may be as simple as the pole may be vertical, but the connection to an electrical source has to be underground. So it's a lot of new information the department's assessing, but again, we are receiving requests. We have a special use permit in-house from a utility installer that is seeking to place one of the first poles. So there is some urgency, which is why, I'll apologize, we are lacking all the answers, but we generally have a feel that this is the approach, the right approach.
Commissioner Levitt?
Can you talk to the placement of these, whether it's on private property, whether it's on easements? Do property owners get involved? Does the city get involved in one or two of those issues?
Well, principally, the proposed ordinance speaks to the public right-of-way areas, and there are caps on the fees. In fact, it speaks to, in some instances, no more than $100 for an application, $100 for this, $100 for that. And so the fee isn't exorbitant by any stretch of the imagination, and probably doesn't cover the cost associated with review by the Department of Planning and the Department of Public Works. The private property issue, I'm going to defer to Mr. Young on that particular one. Very good question.
Well, let me address, first, the questions about going into subdivisions. The one thing that the state law does allow us to continue to do is to restrict the location of these poles in areas that are primarily zoned for single residential family development. So you're not going to see these poles popping up whether in the right-of-way or out of the right-of-way, in the middle of somebody's backyard. We do not have to allow that to occur. In terms of private property, the way the law is set up, there are differing permit requirements, one for inside right-of-way, one for outside right-of-way. So, in terms of small cells being located outside of right-of-way on private property, there are allowances for that, but there is a more stringent application and review process than if it were located within the right-of-way. But again, not within a residentially zoned area or historic area.
So a little better news.
And just one other, I'm sorry, one other just note and comment, is the law is set up to encourage co-location on existing facilities, whether it be a building, a, another pole that exists, streetlights, street, signalized intersection-type street signs, so those are also available. So you may have a situation, and often will have situations, where the process is not construction of a new pole, but a co-location on an existing facility.
Commissioner Cohn?
You just answered one of my questions as to a requirement to locate on existing structures first.
It's not a requirement. I don't want to give that indication, but I think the way the ordinance is set up, that it encourages that.
Does that mean that when a small cell is erected, that other providers can use that same cell, or do they each have, allowed to have their own?
We can't mandate that.
So we could have four or five different providers, each with their own pole.
I think from a practical perspective, it's unlikely, because one of the things that we can do is say that, you know, if it becomes, when you have that many poles, especially in the right-of-way, you have sightline issues, and you have a lot of other issues that we can regulate. So I think from a practical perspective, that's unlikely to occur.
But it's just unlikely, not necessarily going to happen.
That's true.
Thank you. Commissioner Gragnani?
My question goes along those same lines, and that is, can, can we at least request that they put in subdivisions where all of the utilities are undergrounded already? Can we request that they be put in common ground, or, you know, someplace out of the way, or do...
Again, in terms of new utility poles... Again, in terms of new utility poles, there is a restriction on them locating in single-family residential areas.
Okay.
And the state law continues to allow that. But if there is an existing facility, then I believe that a co-location would be allowable there. So you might, that, in essence, is the encouragement I think you're looking for.
Okay. So, and if, do we have any subdivisions where the city, I mean, I don't even remember, in Westland Farms and that, are they underground, or are they above-ground utilities?
From my recollection, most of our overhead utility installations are in the large lot area, and those subdivisions were generally plotted in the 70s and early 80s. Most of the recent residential subdivisions-
Even slightly pre-Wildwood.
Like, yes, even pre-Wildwood, St. Louis County required all utilities to be undergrounded.
Undergrounded, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Helfry.
I'm going to tag on to the previous two questions, and that is, you stated that the co-location is encouraged but not required. So, one of the things, one of the things that we ran into when we were talking with MSD about their boxes and panels, was, if I remember correctly, that somebody didn't want them to place their boxes on their poles. And so my question to you is, as far as, co-location can, say, Ameren Ue, say, yeah, no, you can't put yourself on our light pole? Is that?
Yes, they can say that.
Okay, then I'm going to ask a question that's probably, how is co-location encouraged?
Through the permitting process. It's an expedited review procedure, and it's just a quicker procedure, because you don't have to go through the process of analyzing the location of the pole. And there can be some contract, you can enter into a contract with the city, the state law allows this, whereby the city would allow for co-location on city facilities throughout the city, again, with, where you set forth fee requirements and pre-approval essentially of locations.
Mayor Boland.
So Joe, what is it you're asking, you're wanting the commission to do relative to this item?
The department is respectfully requesting a motion, and second, to approve the department's information report with recommendation, thereby allowing it to make some of the fee adjustments, and then return with a draft letter of recommendation at a future meeting.
Thank you.
No other comments. I have a couple of questions for both Mr. Runich and Mr. Young. Under Section 6, indemnity insurance performance bond, it looks like we have an indemnity set up for the city officials, but what about volunteers? Namely, the Planning and Zoning Commission, or is that considered an officer or an employee at this point? And then my second comment would be, if we're going to go this route, we should probably do an additionally insured clause on the carriers' liability insurance, if, if anything is going on city property. And my final question is, it looks like we have an exemption set up, conceptually, for large assets from a telecommunications, but that doesn't necessarily protect us from abandoned poles, so I'm not sure why we would have an exemption. We should have a bond for whatever it is. Thank you.
So Chair Lee, your first comment is on page 13, I believe, Section 6A.
Page 12.
Page 12. And then the additionally insured, and I will defer to Mr. Young on those two items.
Yeah, in terms of that indemnity, the indemnity is intended as applied to any work done by the wireless provider. Volunteer would really have no role in any of that. That's why it just, I don't think it's necessary. But I can certainly review it closer. In terms of the insurance requirement, the named as an additional insured, and again, a lot of these are things that would be negotiated in any contract that we may enter into with a provider, and that would be something that would be appropriately negotiated into a contract if the, if city property is to be used. And then, in terms of the exemption on the performance bond, I'll, I'll review that. I'm trying to remember if that's something that was required by the law or not, but I will, I'll review that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We'll check them all out, and advise before we ask for any action on the letter of recommendation.
So we have a motion on the floor?
No.
Commissioner Levitt.
It was my impression that he was going to revise that before he asked for a motion, or you're still asking for a motion to that?
At this stage, I would still seek a motion, given the fact that we do have interest in these types of small wireless facilities. And certainly, before we would bring back the draft letter of recommendation, Mr. Young, Mr. Newberry, and I will address all of the questions, add the changes, and then we'll do a summary sheet in support of the draft letter of recommendation. Thank you.
Commissioner Beatty, second. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Cohen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregg-Ni.
Yes, we're looking to-
Commissioner Beatty.
Yes.
Commissioner Depler.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Helfry.
Yes.
Commissioner Levitt.
Yes.
Chair Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
I will abstain, as I'm employed by this particular industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Boland.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on, we have a new business item. Mr. Newberry.
A response to a communication from Caitlin Horn, representative of the St. Louis Sudbury School, which is dated August 1, 2019, requesting amendments to an amended conditional use permit in the NU non-urban residence district, St. Louis County's PC 162-89 Douglas Goldberg, that governs the use of this 7.34 acre site being located on the east side of Austin Fort Road, north of Melrose Road. Located at number 24Y 420183, street address 2906 Austin Fort Road, thereby allowing the operation of a private not-for-profit specialized school within an existing structure upon the property, a single-family dwelling, along with utilizing current parking areas for such. The private school would operate in conjunction with the plant nursery, with sales room, and Wildwood Green Arts, Ward 6.
Thank you, Mr. Newberry, Mr. Runich.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Department of Planning has prepared for your consideration tonight, a draft correspondence item relating to the request that Mr. Newberry just recited into the record. This particular location has a long use history, starting with the petitioner, who is identified in the correspondence, Doug Gilbert, and carrying forward for many years under Mr. Gilbert, and now a new petitioner in this case. Mr. Gilbert and his wife opened a perennial farm at this location many years ago. The perennial farm was very successful, and ultimately led to the need for a conditional use permit to accommodate certain aspects of a successful business on Austin Fort Road. St. Louis County granted a conditional use permit for the plant nursery with sales room, and required a number of improvements associated with the property. At one point many years ago, this was a prime location for the purchase of perennials before they became popular and are sold by mass marketers across the country. Recently, Mr. Gilbert petitioned the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city of Wildwood to allow for a facility, one of the existing buildings, to be converted to Wildwood Green Arts, a art facility, an educational facility, and a place for talented people to come and practice sculpture and other endeavors. The Planning and Zoning Commission was very supportive of that request, and authorized the southernmost building, excuse me, the building in the middle of the accessway, to become Wildwood Green Arts, while the plant nursery with sales room could be retained as well. Tonight, the petitioner is the Sudbury School, and they are seeking the right to amend the conditional use permit to allow for a specialized private school. That specialized private school would be housed in the single-family dwelling that is located within the boundaries of the existing conditional use permit. Therefore, the permit needs just to be amended to accommodate the additional use and any conditions associated with that additional use that may be different than a plant nursery with sales room and Wildwood Green Arts. The petitioner in this case, the school, has provided a preliminary development plan that provides the perspective of the site relative to existing buildings and structures, parking areas, woodland locations, access onto Austin Fort Road, et cetera. Along with that preliminary development plan, the petitioner has also provided several sheets describing the Sudbury School, its philosophy, its operating parameters at this location, and other additional information. All of that was provided as background to the department's draft correspondence. As mentioned at the start of the presentation, the property has a history of use that is non-residential in nature, and has a level of improvements not consistent with the residential area. Therefore, the consideration of this request can be done due to those circumstances. Importantly, in the non-urban resident district, specialized private schools are considered a conditional use, like the plant nursery with sales room and Wildwood Green Arts. There is no prohibition on the number of conditional uses that may exist on a single tract of land. Therefore, again, the consideration can be undertaken in this case. I think it's important to note that this particular type of school does not have the class sizes or number of children that you would typically associate with a public school. As provided by the petitioner, they are thinking anywhere from 10 to 12 students with a growth that ultimately could reach 30 in total. The anticipated traffic patterns are about five to six vehicles at a time, and those would occur generally in the morning and afternoon, with some evenings with special events. And then finally, their hours of operation are flexible, that generally follow a typical school day. The Department of Planning has considered the request, and would note principally, that the proposal does not add any new structures or buildings, does not add any additional parking area or impervious surfaces, and will utilize a underutilized building that is located on the property at this time, the single-family residence, which is located at the very top of the conditional use permit boundary, and you can see it there on the The lack of change, the department believes, is indicative of the limited impact that would be caused by a private specialized school of this nature and size. However, to ensure that the school has a limited amount of impact, the department has created a set of additional conditions to be considered for addition or inclusion as part of the permit. For the most part, it ensures that the specialized private school must operate within the current parameters of structures, buildings, parking, and size of the conditional use permit area. It also specifies that the single-family dwelling intended for private use and has been used for private purposes must meet all building code requirements, fire district standards, city codes relative to access, fire safety, and et cetera. Additionally, the department believes that parking for the specialized private school needs to be designated, so there is a clear location for it in association with the new use or activity, and not necessarily just be blended into what is already in place for the plant nursery with sales room and Wildwood Green Arts. The department has added hours of operation along with days, again, to ensure consistency with a typical day for an educational facility, as well as to ensure for surrounding residential properties that the extent of activity on this site will be consistent with the other two conditional uses. The department believes these additional conditions, the limited amount of activity associated with this particular school, and again, the fact that no additional building structures or impervious surfaces are planned, indicate a low-impact addition to this existing permit, and the department is supporting it at this time. Therefore, tonight, again, the department has prepared a draft correspondence reflecting a favorable recommendation regarding this matter, with conditions to ensure the least amount of impact caused by its location at this current site. Mr. Chair, after a motion, or you open the floor for discussion, the department will be glad to respond to questions, answer any, or respond to comments, answer any questions. And again, I would note, Ms. Horn spoke during the public participation section of tonight's meeting, and is available to answer any questions regarding the school itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runich. I have a motion. Entertaining, Mayor Boland.
So I would just note that, a couple of things. First of all, the, the request is really not substantially different than Item 6 that's already allowed, childcare center, nursery school, day nursery. And secondly, I would submit that many in the area and the city as a whole may prefer this over other uses that are in fact currently permitted, so I would motion that it be approved.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Levitt.
Two things. One, on the preliminary site development plan, it mentions that the, most students tend to trickle in, and I'm guessing this is a typo, but it says 9:00 AM to 10:30 PM. Should that be 10:30 AM? They're shaking their head, yes. And then also, looking at this map, we have the house that is off property in the upper-right section. It appears that the driveway that accesses that house goes through that property, is that accurate, or there's just more that's not on this map?
That is an accurate reflection of the current condition, and I believe Mr. Gilbert could probably provide-
But it's also a little vibrant here.
Because my, my question or concern relating to that is if traffic is going to that house, and you have a school through which they're driving to get there, just safety concerns.
Well certainly, if the commission is inclined, we can identify a couple of signs that would be placed along the entry drive, that northernmost entry drive, slow children, and then at the Y where one access separates from the other, we could certainly identify where the school is versus making a guess.
I would encourage that.
Mr. Chairman, could we see if there's a second to my motion?
One second. Were you going to do that? Okay. Commissioner Beatty, second.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Commissioner Gregg-Ni.
I don't know if we can answer this. I guess I was kind of surprised to, when I read this, that the fire department is not recommending some sort of sprinkler systems or something.
One of the first suggestions the department provided to the representatives of this school was to meet with the fire marshal-
I don't know if we can answer this. I guess I was kind of surprised to, when I read this, that the fire department is not recommending some sort of sprinkler systems or something.
One of the first suggestions the department provided to the representatives of the school was to meet with the fire marshal and gain an understanding of their requirements relative to converting a private residence to a public facility. There was a conversation that was held, and as long as the school only occupies the first floor, there is no sprinkler requirement. If they move to the second floor, which is not their plan, then they would have to meet additional requirements per the fire district. That is why the department included in the proposed amendments to the permit the requirement that all renovations and all additional building or construction follow all of the codes.
Okay, I did see that, and I just was surprised that it did not require sprinkler systems. I guess the other question that I would have was in regards to, in the information from the Sudbury School, it talks about possibly in the future, operating a, quote, forest school for children younger than five years of age. Would that school come in under the maximum of 30 students total for both, or would they have to come back here for, for any adjustments to the CUP in order to add that in the future?
The Planning and Zoning Commission would have to first review and act upon any additional activities other than the prescribed specialized private school. An argument could be made that they are one in the same, but again, given the specificity of the permit, the department would advise them now and in the future, any additions of that nature would have to be considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, that's fine. I would hope so. Thank you.
Councilman Werther.
Thank you. Mr. Vunich, and this is as much a housekeeping item as anything else. Under the not ready for action items, one of the public hearing items is in a correspondence regarding this particular property from February 14th, 2017. Will this ultimately then have that item removed from our agenda going forward?
Yes, I believe Mr. Gilbert, who's here to speak on his own accord, is not pursuing the dormitory and some of the other activities that once were considered as part of Wildwood Green Arts. So the intent would be is that if the Planning and Zoning Commission grants the additional use plus the amended permit conditions, and the city council allows the effective date to come into play, the department will then return with a request to remove that item from the agenda.
Commissioner Cohen.
Just one quick question. What is your, your source of water? If fire suppression is required, would there be enough water pressure from those wells?
Seeing no further comments, we have a motion to accept the department's recommendation in a second. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gargnani.
Yes.
Commissioner Beatty.
Yes.
Commissioner Depler.
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson.
Yes.
Commissioner Helfrey.
Yes.
Commissioner Levitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen.
Yes.
Chair Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Werther.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have a couple of other items. If the Planning and Zoning Commission will spare additional few minutes. During public participation, Mr. Hudson provided a summary of the activities on the adjoining property to his over the course of the last couple of months. And as the department has advised the Planning and Zoning Commission in that same timeframe, all of the requirements relating to the water testing had finally been addressed, meaning that the testing firm, ARDL, had modified their proposal to address a couple of other toxins or chemicals or compounds. The department was able to finalize the amount of the test, uh, cost of the testing, and ultimately, the contracts were signed and are complete. The department contacted the property owner, Mr. Roberts, and advised him that the city was finally in a position to do the water quality testing. Due to conflicts, the site was not available through the month of August, but the department was assured that after August, the testing could proceed. Over the course of the last week and a half, the department has sent emails to Mr. Roberts requesting information on available dates and times when the testing could occur. The department has not received a response at this time. The department is disappointed certainly that after months and months and even a year plus of Mr. Roberts seeking a conclusion to the conditional use permit process, we have been unable to schedule the water testing. The next step for the Department of Planning is to send Mr. and Mrs. Roberts, the property owners, a letter advising them that if the testing cannot be established in a reasonable timeframe, the next step would be to recommend to the Planning and Zoning Commission a revocation of the conditional use permit. Again, we have yet to achieve full compliance to that permit due to the need for the noise or sound analysis, which was completed, and this water quality testing. So if there is an objection to that process, the department certainly would like to hear it from the Planning and Zoning Commission tonight before it prepares the letter and sends it to Mr. and Mrs. Roberts.
Any discussion? Mayor Boland.
I just have a question. Joe, this may be related to this, but at one of our recent council meetings, Councilmember Remy, Ward Three, who is also a physician, saw a report relating to this, and he raised and, I mean, he made a statement that several of the items that, chemicals that have been at issue here are not possible to be contagious on an oral basis or on a wind basis. You would have to actually drink the water, whatever. And I didn't, as I'm not a physician or chemist, understand exactly everything he said, but my question is, did we explore that, and if so, what has been the result of that?
Yes, I did talk with the representative from our ARDL and ask him if any of those items that were listed in the contract that were to be tested for were unreasonable or inappropriate at this stage. And the response was is that they were not expecting to find some of them, but for the cost of the additional items as part of the overall testing, it seemed to then to be a reasonable approach to cover all the bases. And so with that, the department retained them in the contract language that was ultimately signed.
Okay. And I don't disagree that that may be a practical solution. If and when the report comes back to the commission, I would ask on behalf of the commission that we get delineation from someone who does know whether it is possible for the transmission of, of, you know, any health issues on a, on a wind basis versus, you know, is it necessary to drink the water or touch it or what have you, so that we can be educated on what we're dealing with exactly?
There's been, I would not say that the Department of Planning is just for the last couple of-
Respiratory basis is the word I'm aiming for.
Has not just kind of just been waiting. We have thought about the, the next steps if the testing is concluded and who or what might be best to assist in that analysis. Again, the testing firm will just give us the raw data, and what do we do with that? And so the thought was twofold. First, the state of Missouri, the Department of Natural Resources, or the Department of Health or Senior, and Senior Services, or both, be asked to review it and make a determination or provide an opinion, at least. Secondly, the St. Louis County Department of Health. If those two entities were to say, no, it's not within our purview, or we feel uncomfortable making those decisions, we would then seek a private consultant to basically review and say, this is good, this is bad, or somewhere in between, much like we did with Dr. Prager when we were working with the Strucker Forest site, a risk assessment, so to speak, professional. So that would be my approach to that. Certainly, the second item is when ARDL completes the testing, I intend to have them present the test results to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It will not be the Department of Planning, feeling that the experts need to tell you how they did it, the results of it, and any, in any kind of outliers they found or other items of interest.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Commissioner Gargnani.
Mr. Vunich, when you send this letter to the Roberts, are you going to give him any kind of boundaries as to how long he has to reply and when he has to let the city get in?
Yes, typically, the department in code enforcement activity uses a standard 15, 30, or 45-day window. They're increments that just seem to work best, and we've used them for the past 24-plus years. To allow the testing, I think a short window is appropriate because we're set to go, and it requires nothing of the Roberts to address the current conditions. In terms of, let's say, where action is required that would necessitate contacting an outside entity to help or to assist, then we give the longer timeframes.
Okay, so I would, I would agree. I mean, I think we need to get in there as soon as possible, and, you know, right now we've got some pretty good weather and knowing Missouri and how fast things can change, I would, I would think the 15 days. And, you know, if you don't hear back from him, then I assume you have some backup plan for getting in there, because as far as I'm concerned, we have no choice. This has to be done, just like we have to let the state tell us what to do with all the towers and everything.
My backup plan is to pursue a revocation of the permit. The department does not have the authority to enter the property without the property owner's permission for this particular activity. So if there is no response, or if the Roberts were to say no to the testing, then we would move into the next phase.
Thank you.
The last item, Mr. Newberry made copies of the fundamentals of planning and zoning, a series of classes that are held through the late fall and early winter of 2019 and 2020. Many of you in the past have availed yourself to one or all, we're just letting you know that they're back, and if you'd like to attend, the city will cover the cost of your fees or the amount that is required to be paid. So thank you.
Seeing no further action items, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mayor Boland, second. By Councilman Werther. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sentience. We are adjourned.
Thank you all. We appreciate it very much.